Good evening. It's May 17, 2018. I'm calling the regular meeting of the zoning board appeals for Claussen. If everybody could please stand up for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome our newest member, Matt Cook, who was recently appointed by the mayor and sworn in. He is an alternate filling in for Mr. Parker today. Victoria, can you take roll?
Ms. Diane Smith.
Present.
Mr. Cook.
Present.
Mr. Parker. Mr. Snackey.
Present.
Ms. Scripture.
Here.
Ms. Cindy Smith.
Present.
Thank you, Victoria. In our packets, we were mailed the minutes from our meeting of January 18, 2018. Has everybody had a chance to review those?
Yes.
All right. Are there any revisions or changes? If not, I'll accept the motion.
I make a motion to accept the minutes as printed.
Second.
We have a motion and second. Victoria, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Cook.
Present.
Support.
Support.
Mr. Snackey.
Yes.
Ms. Scripture.
Yes.
Ms. Cindy Smith.
Yes.
Ms. Diane Smith.
Yes. Thank you. So the business before us is a public hearing and consideration of request for substitution and/or expansion of nonconforming use of property located at 1510 and 1524 North Crooks Road in the BRD 2, Business Renewal District 2 pursuant to Sections 34-575-2 and 34-575-3 of the Land Development Regulations of the Claussen City Code. Is there somebody like to speak to this? Would you like to go first, Mr. Elliott, our planner?
Do you want me to do it, or you want to just get the public hearing out of the way?
Why don't you go ahead and go first?
All right, okay. I'll do the presentation. So this is a site on North Crooks Road. It's in the BRD 2 or Business Renewal District 2 zoning district. It's a 1.65 acre site. There's a 23,813 square foot building on the property. This is coming before you, as you indicated, pursuant to two subparagraphe of Section 34-575, the Land Development Regulation. Under that section, one of the powers of the zoning board of appeals is to allow for modification and substitution of nonconforming uses. In this particular zoning district, there are a number of buildings that were not adapted for the uses that are currently allowed in the BRD 2 district, and there have been and continue to be a fair number of older industrial type uses that prevailed there before the property was zoned to that district. The BRD 2 district now is more of a research, office-type of district as opposed to more strictly industrial, which was what was present there in the past. So in this particular building, some of those uses have continued to exist in the rear of the building. You probably know the front of the building has the wine shop there off the wagon, and there's a flower store in the building as well. But in the rear, historically and up to the present, there have been sort of quasi-industrial uses. And your ordinance allows you to deal with those in two ways. So under 34-575-2, you can allow for the expansion of a nonconforming use into any part of a building which were manifestly arranged or designed for such use and which existed at the time of adoption or amendment of this article, but no such use shall be extended to occupy any land outside of the building. And then under 34-575-3, you can allow a nonconforming use to be changed to another nonconforming use, provided that the Board of Appeals, either by general rule or by making findings in a specific case, find that the proposed use is equally appropriate or more appropriate to the district than the existing nonconforming use. And in permitting such a change, the Board of Appeals may require appropriate conditions and safeguards. So there are two spaces in the building that are at issue. You should have had a plan in your packet that showed the particular addresses and floor plan of the building. The first is 1510 North Crooks, which has been occupied by Dozer Cycle Studio in the past. In 2016, the zoning board of appeals allowed that use to be expanded within that space. And then in that same year, with respect to the 1524 space, a metalworking studio was allowed to go into that space, which I believe had been formerly occupied by Dozer. I was actually, that was the first zoning board of appeals meeting I came to, and I was just sitting here watching. I wasn't doing it. So I did not participate in that, but I believe that to be an accurate representation of what happened at that time. So Dozer Cycle Studio was, had both a Class B auto sales license or vehicular sales license, and then also engaged in the customization of motorcycles. The proposal is to replace that with a Class B dealership, auto sales dealership, that would be operated by the building owner, Mr. Farida here, who is here to speak to you tonight. And then with respect to the Forever Flowers place, the proposal is to replace that with an auto detailing operation, specifically vehicle wrapping. Oh, the other way around?
Yeah.
Okay. I thought that was true, Jim. So the other way around. The big space is the vehicle wrapping, right? And the small space, 1524, is your dealership.
Right.
And so I will reverse what I said in my memo. So if you apply, I mean, there's two ways to look at this. So were these spaces, and that's why we noticed under both those sections of the ordinance. Number one, were these spaces, areas of the building, that were designed for operations such as this? In other words, sort of quasi-industrial type of operation? We believe that is so. Jim's been in the building. I think he can testify to that point. The other standard, and either of these would be sufficient, is are these uses equally appropriate or more appropriate in the district than those that have come before them? So with respect to Forever Flowers, I'm going to do this on the fly here, you're proposing to replace what was, you know, a metalworking operation with just a Class B vehicle sales operation. In my view, that's a less intense activity than metalworking, which, you know, involved, we're not talking about bodywork or any kind of vehicle repairs of that nature here. What we're talking about is basically just storage, and Mr. Farida can explain it more when he gets up here. So I would view that as less intense and therefore more appropriate in this district, more conforming in this district than what was there previously with Forever Flowers. With regard to the Dozer space, now you're talking about, instead of, sorry, I'm fighting with the sore throat. Instead of motorcycle customization, you're only talking about vehicle wrapping, basically detailing of vehicles. And again, I would view that as less intense than what was there before, and therefore more appropriate than what was there before. If you were to agree with my recommendation, then I have some proposed findings for you that are, that go along those lines. I would just suggest that you reverse the two addresses and be and see if you're going to agree with those. And then I think it would be appropriate to condition any such approval on there being no activities outside the building and no storage outside the building.
Can I ask?
Sorry. Any questions? I'll try to answer them.
I have a question, Craig.
Yeah.
So you said storage. Isn't this similar to what's going on across the street, or not? I have to remember my perspective. Isn't that same as what we're doing with the dealership? Where they're doing the storage and the detailing in the back lot?
Well, that's outside.
Well, and that's what I'm saying, though. I mean, it's a similar thing that we already have going on in that same, it's the same district, right?
Right.
So this is actually not even going to be outside. This would all be inside. There would be no, so this is even more, more better?
Less intrusive.
Less.
Yes, thank you. Then the other thing that already is going on.
Right. Arguably, there might, you know, he might have been able to even come in and request a special use permit for these things, but it just seemed, it seemed unduly cumbersome given that the way this building has been addressed in the past is by the ZBA through the substitution of nonconforming uses process. So, you know, that just seemed like a more customer-friendly way to deal with it to us.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Elliott?
Since I reread this and flipped the size and content, I'm a little confused. I understand that the 1510, the long, quite a bit of floor space, it says almost 8,000 square foot of floor space is vehicle wrapping, okay. Is this amount of floor space, I don't know what a Class B used vehicle sales could do in 2,200 square feet. What is, I guess you have to explain what that means.
My name is Larry Farida. I own 1,500 North Crooks, the entire building. In the past, I've always bought and sold cars my entire life, and I mainly do higher-end cars. And I don't want to have 10 cars, 20 cars. There will be no repair there. I have a contract with a certified mechanic shop, so there will never be any cars being worked on there. But I'll never have more than five cars, and I fit five cars no problem in there.
Larry, do you also have a storage facility in Pontiac at the M1?
Yes, I do. And that holds seven cars.
And I'm sorry to the board, I was the one that reversed the addresses and got Greg to write the report exactly opposite of what was actually happening.
So.
I guess to finish up, sorry for that. The five cars, then, I did not look at the entrance and exit to this particular floor space. So you've got a vehicle entrance, you can put five cars in there?
I have a roll-up door in and another roll-up door in, so yes.
Okay. And then, I'm guessing in the vehicle wrapping that you, that was the motorcycle repair, so there must be some reasonable entry and exit on that one.
They have a roll-up door also. There are actually like four large roll-up doors in the rear of the building, which you can drive, with the height, you can pull a semi in.
Okay.
I'm not sure if those plans in front of you had the fourth door on it, but I remember installing it two years ago, 2016 or '15, when you added the fourth roll-up door.
Yeah, it was a few years ago.
Well, the plan we have identifies a loading space, so I'm assuming that's where the doors are.
Yeah.
So are there any other questions for the applicant?
No.
Greg, at this time, do they call the public hearing?
I was going to say, before we make a motion, do we need a public hearing?
Yeah, it would be appropriate to conduct the public hearing before you make any motion.
Can I make one more question?
Sure.
There was a standard mailing to the property owners in the area of, I don't know how many feet of this.
Wasn't there a list on the back?
Yeah, there was a list on the back, and the notice perimeter was shown on the 300 feet.
And I guess just to reaffirm that we didn't give it any response, nothing positive, nothing negative?
No email or letter responses for this meeting.
Okay. Is there any other questions before I open the public hearing?
I have one question. So the vehicle wrapping operation, can you give an example? Is this like the wrapping that's done for a lot of advertising, like for a van, say, for an HVAC contractor, that type of wrapping?
I do not own it.
Okay.
I am leasing it out to them, but they basically, I don't think they do much of the advertising, because I have cars that are going to be wrapped with advertising at the M1, and he said, "I have to get the advertising for them." They mainly will do a car, let's say, you own a white car and you want it to be black. Instead of going and getting it painted, they wrap the car and it'll now be black.
Okay. Okay, understood.
Oh, a lot of cars. I was at the Jack Colley Ferrari yesterday, and they had a couple Ferraris in there that were wrapped.
So I guess they would specialize in some of the wrappings that go on the fronts of the bumpers and stuff to protect for paint chips and things?
Correct.
Okay. And you said you typically deal in the higher-end cars?
Yes.
What, can you give some examples of a higher-end car?
Right now, I've been dealing through Dozer Cycle Studio. Right now, I have a Porsche GT3 RS. I have a Cayman GT4. I have a 458 Ferrari. I have a 55 International.
Okay, so there's no, there's no risk of this becoming a buy here, pay here lot?
No, 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 no. I've never, I've never dealt in lower-end things.
And I guess the way you've proposed the used vehicle dealership is more set up as a showroom, so it's all, all your vehicles are stored.
Correct. Most of the dealings I do are, I have a lot of friends and a lot of people that know me, and they'll tell me to find them this car, and I'll go out and find it for them. It's not more about, it's not about having these cars and trying to push them on people. It's more about getting cars for people that are looking for certain cars.
More of a collector than a dealer.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions before I open the public hearing?
How, how do you define no outdoor storage? In terms of a, if you were to do a city inspection and you cruised through there, what would be outdoor storage?
The Class B dealership license requires spaces for outdoor display of vehicles. This site is unique that we put it under the zoning district, that there'd be no outdoor storage or display. The previous Dozer also had that requirement, and we didn't want the motorcycles or any vehicles that he was purchasing out on display. It's mostly the back parking lot where we had problems with storage of vehicles, and then Dozer's artwork also. If you've seen the ironworks, if you ever ate at the National Coney Island over there on Maple, you can see all of his artwork, motorcycle parts, industrial metalwork. That's what was on display in the back. And now that he's moving on, Larry has no reason to store stuff outside, and he's agreed to that also.
He's really not going to want to store Ferrari in the back parking lot anyway.
Well, I guess the scenario is, and I'm a little bit confused, maybe Greg can tell us, in the substitution of use, this is only appropriate for Mr. Farida. If he were to decide to do something else, he can't sell that business and maintain it. That would come back to the zoning board as a nonconforming use? Or, because you, you're a longtime business owner, you've been there, there's some history, but then, you know, things happen, and how does this work? And if we were to do that, is it appropriate for a condition to be placed on this ordinance that it, that is only for this defined business with this defined owner? Is that appropriate?
I don't think, I think you're dealing with the use, not the owner. And so it is true that, you know, that that defined use for that space would be allowed. And so if somebody else came and wanted to be a Class B dealer and use that space and sell, you know, used Fords, you know, they could, but they would still be limited by the same conditions, right? They have to be kept inside that space.
Okay, so in this, in this case, we're saying that, as I'm looking through the interpretation of your recommendation, for both conditions, for the, for the vehicle wrapping scenario and for the Class B in the 1524 section, that all the business activities is enclosed.
Right.
And there's no outside storage. And then, Mr. Alvis, you're comfortable with that in terms of being able to enforce that based upon this statement?
I'm able to enforce that. I don't know if Larry committed to the vehicle wrapping, not having vehicles stored out back, but his dealership is what I was dealing with. So I don't know, Larry, were you, is the vehicle wrapping going to store vehicles out back?
Store vehicles? I mean, while they're, if they have some that are going to be wrapped that day, there will be none outside for overnight.
For more than a week?
No, even overnight.
Overnight?
Yeah.
So the applicant's comfortable with that?
I mean, I've seen that some of the cars, they've showed me pictures, they're not doing pintos and stuff. They're doing, they're in Birmingham right now, and its business is so busy that he needs a bigger space.
I basically understood that. I was just looking to make certain that we had the right wording, that what our intent here goes into our conditions appropriately, so. Thank you.
Okay. It is 7:50, and I'll open the public hearing. And is there anybody from the public that wishes to speak? Yeah, sure. Seeing nobody here to speak on this decision, I'm going to close the public hearing.
So we need a motion.
I do.
You need a motion. Are you going to motion us, Cindy?
I don't know. Mr. Ed's got some.
Yeah, you took the notes.
Verbiage that he wanted to alter.
So I would say you should start with the findings, and then based on those, you know, your motion and any appropriate conditions.
Madam Chair, I'd like to start off with this, to make a motion to iterate the findings of fact from this particular meeting with, and this is associated with the substitution and expansion of the nonconforming use of property located at 1510 and 1524 North Crooks Road in the BRD-2 Business Renewal District 2 pursuant to Section 34-575, Paragraph 2, and 34-575-3 of the Land Development Regulations of the Claussen City Code. And I'd like to make the assessment of the findings of facts for this ZBA based upon the McKenna recommendation that was published on April 12 of 2018. There's a standard of review, some analysis. And in the recommendations, I'd like to read this into the record. We believe that the applicant meets the standards for substitution and/or expansion of the nonconforming use as set forth above, and the following are appropriate iterations. The portions of the building designated as 1510 and 1524 North Crooks are designed for and have historically been used for quasi-industrial uses. The Class B used dealership proposal is less intense, and there's more appropriate than the metalworking studio shop that was at 1524 North Crooks. And then the vehicle wrapping use is less intense and more appropriate than the motorcycle customization and sales that had been previously occupying 1510 North Crooks Road. And these findings of facts would be appropriately conditioned that in this area, based upon that this BRD 2, that all the activities associated with these two businesses will be completely contained within the building, and that no outdoor overnight storage associated with these businesses is allowed.
Can I ask for clarification? I was under the impression that Item B, the motorcycle studio, was occupying 1524, which will now be the dealership, and that the metalworking shop was at 1510.
No. Dozer is currently at 1510.
And that will be the detail?
That will be the detailing.
Okay.
And that was a little bit of my confusion. Did I get that right?
I think you got it right.
Yeah. Because when you said it, you took Michael, Michael, excuse me, Motorcycle Studio and labeled that as 1510 on Item C. But you just kind of swatch B and C. I guess I'm confused now.
So I think what needed to happen, I think you read it right, is that the first parentheticals could switch. So the Class B used vehicle dealership is less intense and therefore more appropriate than the metalworking use that has been occupying 1524 Crooks. And the vehicle wrapping use is less intense and therefore more appropriate than the motorcycle studio that has been occupying 1510 North Crooks.
And that's what you're seeking? Yes, okay. And I support the motion as listed, unless you have anything else to add?
Well, he didn't make a motion. He, all he did was do.
I made a motion that we list this as the findings of fact.
Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, I have a motion and a second. Victoria, can you call the roll? This is just for the findings of fact.
Mr. Snackey.
Yes.
Ms. Scripture.
Yes.
Ms. Cindy Smith.
Yes.
Ms. Diane Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
So now we have find is a fact, and I'll accept a motion for approval or disapproval? What's before us today?
You've been taking the notes, Ed. Go for it. Come on.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the expansion of the nonconforming use of the property located at 1510 and 15 North Crooks Road, as previously identified in the, and that this motion is substantiated by our findings of facts that we just approved, and that this should go forward.
Would that be subject to the conditions previously stated?
That's correct, yes. As part of the findings of fact, we did state two conditions about the activities contained within the building and no outside storage associated with the businesses.
If you're okay, can I just add one thing to your motion? Instead of saying the request for expansion Instead of saying the request for expansion, could we say the request for substitution and or expansion of nonconforming use?
Yes.
So, we have a motion, support. We have a motion and support. Victoria, can you call the roll, please?
Ms. Scripture?
Yes.
Ms. Cindy Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Diane Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Sunaki?
Yes.
Motion carried. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Sorry we had to postpone last month on you. Is there any other items on the agenda to discuss?
Today, we received notice that the joint meeting of the Planning Commission Council ZBA on the twenty-ninth has been canceled, and they're looking for new dates. I believe there's a survey or information thing online. Unfortunately, all the dates didn't work for me in June, so. I don't think we have any, anything that's coming in front of this board for variances. We kind of lost contact with Pep Boys, with the Rains, and they were working out of New Jersey, and I believe they had to deal with some hurricanes or some snowstorms from the last time we had. So, their, their main headquarters is out there, so we'll have to reach out and bring them back in front of you. They're proposing a different sign location and taking down the existing pole sign.
So, they want a variance for the new one, too?
Pardon?
They need a variance for the new one, too?
Uh, yeah, because it is in our corner vision triangle, so it'll be like the mobile gas station where they have to lift it up so you can see kids on bicycles or kids walking down the sidewalks. So, it'll be less of a pole sign, but it will be a ground monument sign, but I believe fourteen feet in the air, so.
I know it's unrelated to this, but when's Noble Fish expansion going to be done?
That became public information and was in Crane's Business Weekly.
That's why I'm asking.
And it was in the Free Press, and their main company had made the announcements along with the, is it Asian Village in Novi or whatever, that they're building just beyond the Twelve Oaks Mall, and then announced the expansion of Noble Fish here in Claussen, so. When is it going to be completed? I don't know.
Have they started?
They have not, they would have started demo at this point, but no construction. So, we have had meetings with them, and I thought the meetings went fairly well. Were you at those meetings, or were you not?
They were fairly recent.
They were fairly recent, and Greg wasn't even in attendance with them, so. So, it's going along, along great, so we think it's going to be a great plan. And I think they want to get the underground and all the, the hard work done while we have the road ripped up, because why dig up a road that just got redone? So, you'll be, see a lot of action before July first, because that's when our road project's going to be done.
Because you've got to have that Fourth Parade.
Yes, that, that's the main thing, is the July parade.
Okay. Anything else? Need a motion for adjournment?
Make a motion where you adjourned?
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.